Let's go, Chair.
Please, then. Page 11 of 2014 Gulf County Board of County Commissioners is now in session.
Bow with me, please. Fathers, we come before you today as another beautiful day that you've given us. Lord, we ask that you direct us and guide us as this board goes about conducting the business of the great people of Gulf County. Lord, look over everyone here, and, Lord, let's act in a professional, kind, and courteous way today. God bless our military that put their lives on the line daily for us, and bless our law enforcement. These people do a marvelous job, and they get very little credit for it. Lord, we ask this all in your precious name. Amen. Form me, if you would, with a pledge to the flag.
Ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good. Good morning to everyone. Thank you for taking time to come out to the March the 11th, 2014 regular meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. If any of you have any business for the board, you recognize and you will be given time. At this time, we will move in on our consent agenda. Does any member of the board have any questions or any concerns with the consent agenda? And the information packet?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull pages nine and 10.
All right. Commissioner Bryan requests pages nine, 10. Okay. Any other commissioners?
Just a question for Brett. Brett, on the, Priya, is, are they involved with?
Yeah, they are. You would...
I need to abstain from...
They abstain from that because they are with the DITCH. It is under our DITCH package agreement.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll abstain from 12 and 13.
You will abstain on, okay. Commissioner Jaeger will abstain 12 and 13. Okay, anymore? Anyone from the audience, do you have any questions with the consent agenda or the information packet? If you do, please come forward. If not, Commissioner Bryan, do you want to address pages nine and 10 before we...
Sure.
Okay. All right, you have the floor.
When we discussed this two weeks ago, we talked about getting proof of workers' comp and potentially a letter from the bonding company that this company is bondable, and I was wondering if we were able to receive that information. Whoever would like to address it from the staff?
I can address it. We have not contacted the bonding company. I don't even know what bonding company they would use. They put up a bid bond, a cashier's check in lieu of a bid bond.
And what about the workers' comp issue? Have we seen if they have workers' comp?
We have not requested that information from them at this time because they weren't awarded the bid.
Okay.
I did check references on the company and found out that they...
Hold it a minute. Explain, say, who we're talking about. What contractor we're talking to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the people, I know, but they don't...
Palmetto Plantation.
Okay.
There was a low bidder on the land's landing project.
Then you'll...
I checked references after you had come to my office the other day and found out they do, they have and do work in the fields that we've requested.
Okay. As I've stated before, I'm not comfortable with the way that we are, with the process. I would like for us to require in the bid process proof of workers' comp, but in this situation, if the board wants to move forward, what I would like to do is just make it contingent on them providing their proof of workers' comp, including proof of USL and H, and that would be before the contract is signed. And then I would like for us to have a time period on the payment and performance bond after contract signing. I would just like to know what that timeframe is. I know in your memo, you talked about us having a timeframe. In the Americas Ditch Project, it was about, there were several months that it passed. So I'd like to know what that timeframe is and just kind of nail that down so that we can be certain that we follow up on this.
I'm not familiar with the Americas Ditch Project. It wasn't a grant project, but on the grants, we normally allow 10 to 14 days for the awarded contractor to provide the payment bond, the performance bond, all the insurance documents, not just workers' comp, but they have to also do general liability. They have to provide all that to us, or the county does not execute the agreement with them.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's been the...
Chair recognizes Mr. Jaeger.
That's been basically the policy, Craig, going through with any contract, is once we award, then we require all that stuff before we sign the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
And we need to be certain that they have the endorsement for the USL and H coverage on their workers' comp because it is a boat ramp. And as long as we're doing that, I'm fine with going forward if the board would like to accept that low bid.
Anything else? Any other commissioners? Good with that? There's work.
Mr. Chairman, there was one other thing. We do have waste management here, and we talked about the recycle program a little bit. Lynn, can you come up and let's talk a little bit about that program because it's...
Wait a minute. We're, let's...
This is part of the consent.
Okay.
It's in the consent.
All right, come on. Didn't want to get ahead of this.
No, it's in the consent. I just wanted to...
All right, come on, Ms. Lynn. How are you today?
Thank you. I'm very well. I'm Lynn Yor, to work with waste management, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the recycling issues. Back in April of 2013, this board requested that we deliver a recycling convenience center for the community to use, sort of as a test. And through the first couple of months, it was obvious that the community supported that project because they began to bring recycling materials. And the recycling center was located over on the north end of the Cape. Each pool that we have had in the last several months contains about a ton of recycling materials, give or take a little bit, and the contamination of that has been just over 10%. Now, what contamination means is materials other than recyclable materials being placed in that container. Since that time, the community has begun to place other materials around the container that were not necessarily recycled materials. So it's become a bit of an eyesore occasionally. In addition to that, we will talk a little bit about the billing process. The first few months were not set up correctly as a result of my error, and I do apologize for that. That totals, in last year's budget, just under $3,000. Since that, or about $740 monthly. Since that time, fiscal year 1314, the total billables was about $4,500, which is a result of about $1,300 a month the last couple of months. So if we fast forward all of those numbers through the end of May, which is through the end of this contract period, there will be about $4,000 in additional expenses, plus what we have seen over the last couple of months is the increase in recycle materials and the number of pulls that we make. So it might be that those expenses could be around $5,000 between now and the end of the month. And I didn't want this whole process to get ahead of us and us not understand exactly what you all wanted us to do and for you all not to be brought current on what is going on in the recycles. I know that I just threw a whole lot of stuff really fast, so we can back up and discuss any and all of those points, if you'd like.
Here's one of the things I'm concerned with is the cost is exceeding what we expected, and this was supposed to be a pilot program. We're fixing to go out with the cities on RFQ process. I think at this point, you know, we can't continue to pay. We're going to obviously pay the invoice that's in the consent. They've provided the service, but I think this pilot program has shown us that we've got to do something curbside, that we can't put, we can't put anything out there that's not monitored and because it just doesn't work. I get calls on a regular basis that it's overfilling. Not necessarily that it was overfilling, but as Lynn said, they were putting stuff outside the thing that weren't recyclables. So it's just caused us an awful lot of headache. It's not working like it needs to work, and I wish Pat Hardman was here because, I mean, Pat pushed for that quite a bit, but it's just not working like it's working. We need to pay this invoice, but I would suggest that we suspend this until we go through this and let the folks that put in for the RFQ for the garbage pickup and all to include in there an opportunity for recycle at the curbside, you know. So moving forward, I think that, you know, I would suggest that we suspend that program. But obviously, that invoice is in the consent. We need to pay the invoice, but I want Lynn to come up during that time.
That's good. Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, if we don't have any, anyone doesn't have any other concerns with the consent or information, I have a motion to help start. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger. So moved with me abstaining from nine and 10. All right, okay. Got a second by Commissioner Mclemore. Any further discussion? Anything from the audience? All right. Motion passed. All with one abstention.
Well, I abstain from 12 and 13, I said.
Yeah, okay. Good deal. All right. Let's go to the public hearing. Is anyone here representing Cinnamon Hill?
Yes.
Please, sir, come up.
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Studstill comes up, as you commissioners recall from a month ago, Mr. Studstill had appeared on behalf of the association and had made an initial request with regards to the abandonment of some roads in right-of-ways. In preparation for today, under the state statute, we had publicly noticed today's public hearing. We've received a certified affidavit from Halifax indicating that the advertisement did run on February 25th, meeting the statutory requirements for today, and there is a copy of the public notice that was placed in the local circulation. That's in your packet as well at the Edna Agenda. And I just want to thank Mr. Studstill for coming today.
Do you have any particular questions about this matter?
Any of the board? I do. Studstill, thank you for coming. We are talking. You'll have to refresh my memory right quick on it. There's 34 partials, 31. How many partials? You know?
The total number of lots that are in the Cinnamon Hill subdivision is 37.
37, and of those 37, 20, how many are under one person's controls?
How many? 16 is to a single landowner.
All right. My question is this. Have you contacted not only those, this one that owns the 16, the remaining, and the landowners adjacent to this?
Yes, I've obtained limited power of attorney for this process from all of the landowners within the Cinnamon Hill subdivision and the adjoining neighbors. There's only two.
And?
The Arnold Family Trust and Mr. Walter Peterson. And Mr. Peterson has signed a consent. It was included in the application. Have yet to obtain any such consent or particular objection from the Arnold family, but they do kind of surround this subdivision on three sides.
My question is here. I don't want to, or to make a drastic decision here. We'll make it today if it's necessary, but I don't want to come back, as stated in our prior meeting, and one of these, we're just, being the last name you use, Mr. Arnold here, come back and say, "I wasn't fully aware." Have any, has he signed? Just hold it right here. Let me go over here to our attorney. Mr. Attorney, have you received the proper documentation for this from Mr. Studstill?
I have, and if I, can I take a step back, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, you can.
I know that the commission may be familiar with this. I know Mr. Studstill is, but for the public, just for the purposes of the public hearing, I'd like to be able to at least introduce what the request of the petitioner is, if I can. I just want to take a step back for the folks that are here for the public hearing. Mr. Studstill, on behalf of the association, Cinnamon Hill Property Owners Association, has requested the abandonment of Triton Street that has been improved up to the intersection with Falk Place. Mr. Studstill, on behalf of the petitioner, proposes the abandonment and improvement continuing on Triton Street to access the most northern lot and parcel at the edge of that plat. Proposed improvement would intersect with the unopened right-of-way of Phillips Drive. In addition to that, Starfish Avenue stopping short of the platted but unopened intersection with the section of Nutmeg, Fifth Street on the plat that is unimproved. In addition, all of Tulip Avenue stopping at the adjacent property titled under Richard Arnold, and the fourth is all unnamed alleyways of 15 feet plus or minus between the three blocks listed above. Those legal descriptions were provided by Mr. Studstill on certified legal descriptions that have been available to the public for inspection following our public notice. In addition to that, Mr. Studstill, back, if you all recall, back on January 20th, had submitted a package to you all prior to the last meeting in January. In that packet, he had also provided a recorded plat of the Beacon Hill marked as Cinnamon Hill, proof of the incorporation for Cinnamon Hill Property Owners Association. He's also provided me a recorded copy of the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions for the Homeowners Association known as Cinnamon Hill Subdivision. He's also provided legal descriptions, as I mentioned. He has paid the abandoned processing fee of $150. That's currently your policy, and also a letter of support from an adjacent property owner. That is all part of the record that he has submitted back in January, and you've all had that provided to you in the packet back in January as well. I think that gives a good foundation of, for the public, of what's being asked for today. I have received that all. I have reviewed the Declaration of Covenants and Conditions. The language is in it in Article 4, Section 4. Mr. Studstill, on behalf of the association, has put the language in there with regards to ongoing maintenance obligations, both for stormwater as well as surface water, and the continuing obligations of the association for those road, the roadway maintenance. So to answer your question, I have received that. I have reviewed that, and he has submitted all this in preparation for today. Just wanted to give that foundation for the public. Anybody have questions?
Any questions? Mr. Bryan, that's in your district. All of, any question? That's good. All right. Yes, sir, mister.
All this possible to get in touch with Mr. Arnold. I've just come out of a situation similar to this.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, I don't want to go into this. I can't answer you that question. He says...
I have made great effort and had many conversations with Mr. Richard Arnold. I have not, who is one member of the family trust that owns this land. I have not spoken to any other family members because Richard indicated that he was the contact person for the family trust.
Yes, please.
Mr. Studstill, this is not eliminating access to the Arnold's property.
Gosh, no.
Okay, all right.
They have their own entranceway right on 386.
Sure.
And I believe in the prior information that you submitted, it was indicated that Cinnamon Hill had no desire to close those streets.
Not at all.
All right. What's, what's the wishes of the board? We're up for vote here, Mr. Attorney, under this was a hearing.
After Mr. Studstill, if you want to ask the public if they have comment, following that, you'll make a motion on, if you do accept the petition, you'll make a motion to adopt a resolution that will have to be advertised under the statute, the resolution then will be sent up to Tallahassee, and we'll record that on the counter.
Anyone else from the public? Yes, I asked, we'll ask again. I don't want to bypass or one there. Okay, if not...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Have you had any contact with Mr. Arnold?
I just come out this similar situation, and it was really, really bad, and I don't want to crawl back over there if I can hit it. That's my only concern. I mean, we're talking about, we keep calling a person named, there's nowhere in this building, and I don't even know if he know what's going on.
Mr. Smiley, I have spoken with both Mr. Richard Arnold and Mr. John Arnold in the past. I haven't spoken with them recently, but in the past when this issue has come up. And their concern was the, that they did not want to be in a position where they were not able to traverse those roads to get to their property. And I know in the, the materials that have been submitted, it has been indicated that there's no desire to close those roads. The issue is that all of these folks that own these properties, they can't access them because we don't have the funds to go build roads, and this will allow them to build their roads. So they're, they're kind of in, they're stuck that they can't use their property. I don't see another alternative.
So, Ms. Bryan, you go?
I do. I do feel comfortable. Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Abstention motion, would you please, Commissioner, over here, whatever it was. We get rung out here from time to time.
Nevec, did you have?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, just historically, Clayton has been working on this for some time on behalf of his client, and some of the concerns expressed by the county leading up to today was not, as the commissioner indicated, the funds weren't there to do the improvements. On the flip side, over the course of the last decade or so, there's been improvements in subdivisions done on roads where the counties inherited those problems for ongoing maintenance down the road. Those have been expressed to Mr. Studstill. He's carried them to his client, and he's taken these steps now to create these covenants and restrictions. So there is the obligation of these property owners, once they take ownership of these right-of-ways and abandoned roadways. And there's been an acknowledgement in his correspondence that these property owners have assumed that responsibility and will go forward with that maintenance obligation.
Good, good, good.
And, Mr. Nevec, is there a requirement in this process to notice the adjoining property owners of this action?
Under the statute, there is not right now. That's, as you recall from the last meeting, I'd asked to have the ability to go back and modify the abandonment road policy in the county until over 10 years old, and those are one of the things that we're, I'm going to, I have actually already placed in there, and I'll be putting in the consent for the next meeting. But as it stands right now, it's not required by statute, it's not required by our policy. What you have on the record is what Mr. Studstill submitted to you.
And, Mr. Studstill, have you notified the Arnold's in writing, the Arnold Trust?
Yes.
So, Mr. Nevec, we need a motion to approve or to accept?
To abandon, approve the abandonment of the requested legal descriptions. With that approval, then I'll go and draft the resolution for you to have the chairman sign, and we'll advertise by Mr. Studstill.
I'll make the motion, too.
Make the motion.
My second stands.
All right. Commissioner Bryan makes the motion. Jaeger, seconds. Have you got it? Ms. Sumner, have you got the motion? All right, thank you, dear. Okay, is there any other discussion on this? All right, does any, anyone from the public have any input on this? Not, is there any opposition? No opposition? Motion passed, five and oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Put our county staff, wait, the gentleman gets set down. Okay. Ms. Sumner, do you have anything for the board today? Ms. Norris?
Well, not at all.
Well, anyway, Ms. Herring, correct. She's supposed to be sitting there, but that's fine. Okay. All right. David, do you have anything? Houston? Nothing. All right. Come on up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners.
Thank you.
In front of you, you have your monthly report from the TDC for February. I'm not going to read through it all. I know it's great reading and all that, but I just wanted to let you know that tax revenue for the Tours Development Council was up 3.5% in January, which puts us just under 5% ahead of this time last year. Again, our goal is 20% increase this fiscal year, so we are on our way. I had my monthly TDC Advisory Council meeting on Thursday, and there were a few items that I'd like to bring forth. We're at that time of year that we start our annual sponsorship and special funding program. We had our first county department budget meeting yesterday, and we'll be moving into budgeting. We made a few revisions to the program where all applications are tied to room nights. So if we're having an event, whether it be a signature event, which is a large event, a brand awareness event where we could get publicity for it, we've added sporting events, so youth sporting events that usually are three or four-day tournaments that will bring in room nights and utilize county parks, and then local seasonal events tying to the state statute for tourism and development tax. We'll be requesting that the applicants work further this year to partner with bed tax collectors and the travel industry, the local travel industry, to put packages together, and the result would be to have room nights through the event. So in your packet, you have the approved application from my council, and I'd like to ask your permission to start this process and put the application out for submission.
So moved to begin the process, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Smiley. Other discussion? Any in the audience? Any other discussion? Pass.
Thank you. During the meeting as well, we talked about the increased scope of work for public relations through the end of September. We're adding three media missions, one to Atlanta, one to Birmingham, one to Winter Park, two in-market fam trips, one in April, end of April, around Plain Air, and one in September around the SCALP Festival, as well as hosting about six to 10 bloggers throughout the season. With that said, in your packet, I've, my, my council has approved the amendment of the billing schedule for No Luggage, our strategic firm, as their scope of work will change between now and September, and I'm asking your permission for approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Smiley. Other discussion with the board members? Any input from the... If so, not, motion passed, five and oh.
At the last council meeting, I requested permission to utilize state contract to purchase a four-wheel-drive truck for the beach ambassador program, which you approved. After that meeting, I spoke with Mr. Nelson, and emergency management needs a new vehicle, and so he will be having to, could trade in his truck, which is a four-wheel drive. It's a 2006. It has 40,000 miles. I'm requesting that I purchase that, that vehicle and save $8,000.
Absolutely. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Allow that to happen? Okay, we're going to purchase. Now, Mr. Nelson, you're going to go down to Mr. Danford's used car lot and get you a replacement?
As I respectfully request.
Okay, all right. Okay, we're just having a little humor this morning. All right, that is good. That's a good savings, and you, you're going from 24 down to $16,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'll save you and probably help us and help Nelson in.
Yes.
All right, we got us...
Discussion.
Okay, just a minute. Who made the motion?
I did.
Commissioner Jaeger, motion. I just have to keep all my records straight here. Seconded by Commissioner Bryan. Okay, we're in discussion mode.
Do we want to go ahead and, do we want to go ahead and include Marshall's bid on it because he's going to need a new truck? In your motion, do it all at one time?
I will include that if he's, are you going to buy it on state contract where you don't need to? Are you going to?
We're trying to buy it on state contract. I'm not so sure it's going to be on state contract.
Okay, I'll include that.
Go out RFP.
Okay, I'll include that in my motion to allow Marshall to go out.
Okay. You got the motion. All right, anything else? Commissioner Mclemore, Commissioner Smiley? Or any, anyone from the public? Not? Is there any opposition? No opposition? Motion passed, five and oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, young lady. Okay, Mr....
Mr. Chairman, I've got two things.
Sir, Mr. Lawrence, what we have?
Got two ship projects we're completing. Got two change orders for two separate projects. One is on the Colvin project for $2,907 even, and then we have one for the Nunnery project for $2,550 even.
$2,550 even, okay.
And these will close out these projects.
That's it on this.
That's right.
It is. I know this Colvin, it's been a...
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Mclemore. We're going to get a second out of Commissioner Jaeger on this. Any further discussion on this? Any one in the audience? Not? If there's no opposition, this motion passed, five and oh. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Hey, Mr. Danford? Nelson?
Sir, I have one thing.
All right, sir, please come up.
We'll be conducting a functional exercise this week. We're going to be, over Wednesday and Thursday, we'll be doing training, and on Friday, we'll be doing a functional exercise. and Thursday, we'll be doing training, and on Friday, we'll be doing a functional exercise. What it is, is an active shooter exercise at the high school. So for those of y'all that would like to come out and attend and see what we've been doing, we, we've keyed in, as everybody knows, just watching the news, it seems like more and more and more, we're having shootings in schools and theaters and just malls and everywhere else. But what we've done here is we've keyed in on the schools, and at 10 o'clock on Friday morning, we'll be starting the exercise over at Gulf Coast State College and going through a lockdown procedure with them. And then we'll move over to the high school, the children, we, they're gonna be let go at 11:30. So we'll start our exercise at 11:45, and it.
This is Friday?
Friday.
Okay, 11:45, okay.
No students involved. It's a functional exercise. What we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be going through a lot of training the next two days, especially with law enforcement and school staff on, on what to do in case this does happen. And, and that's what we'll be actually putting into play, is everything that we've learned, we'll put it into play on, on Friday. So those of y'all that would like to attend, that's.
All right, let's flip back to Wednesday and Thursday, what timeframes there?
Uh, I have to read it and see.
Okay.
We've got several different train.
But, well, Wednesday and Thursday, what will it be?
Well, Wednesday and Thursday's gonna be at several different locations.
Okay.
Be at the high school, the state college, and.
That's this Wednesday, starting?
Starting tomorrow, Sacred Heart Hospital and Department of Health.
Okay.
And we'll be doing training in all those facilities.
And you'll be doing it with the sheriff's department, any other agencies?
No, that's, we're just, we're just limiting it to law enforcement.
Okay.
And, and the schools or these others.
All right, that's good.
We're planning on, hopefully during the summer, maybe doing a full-scale exercise, and that's when we'll start pulling in everybody else.
Good deal. Any questions from anyone, any audience? That all, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Manuel? Thank you. Ms. Kapinski?
Yes, sir, I do, I have actually two parts, but, but they basically are part of each other. As you are aware, we had four NARDA projects that were approved, and there have been discussions ongoing regarding relocation of the Indian Pass Boat Ramp. And based on that discussion, DEP, our representative from DEP that's doing the NARDA projects, has stated that we need to withdraw our application for Indian Pass Boat Ramp, because it was approved in the location it currently exists, and if we're gonna move it, then basically.
We gotta get re-permitted and the whole nine yards?
Well, there, there's gonna be, there's a lot more involved than there would be if we, if we did work on that side. So what we're doing now is we're.
Yeah, I'll get to you, go ahead.
We're, we're working diligently with them to make sure those funds stay in Gulf County and are transferred to one of the other projects that we have. They expressed good, good thoughts of possibly adding it to Highland View Boat Ramp, to the work there, and possibly the pier as well, adding those funds to those two projects. So that being said, what I'm asking is that you sign a letter stating that we are withdrawing Indian Pass Boat Ramp from the NARDA funding.
Yeah.
That's my first request.
And I'll make a motion to that effect, to write the letter. And in discussion, Mr. Chairman, we, we, everybody knows we've been talking for a couple of years, no, maybe longer than that, about moving that boat ramp, because it, we have to send public works down there sometimes, once a week, to dig that thing out, 'cause it sands in, it's causing a little bit of erosion, and the McNeil family has been pretty good.
They've been generous, I'm sure they have.
Yeah, and, and so, we've gotta get site control, and we gotta do some other things, but, you know, I think it's appropriate, in talking with, with Pierce Barrett from, from DEP, he thinks that we can move that, those monies, he thinks they'll stay in Gulf County with our other projects, so that's, that, I think it's appropriate to move forward with that, and let's, let's continue to move forward with the Indian Pass Boat Ramp and the relocation there.
One question, back to you. On these NARDA projects, the four was Indian Pa, uh, Pier, the, uh, Art?
Highland View Boat Ramp.
Highland View and Indian Pass.
And Indian Pass.
So it's gotta stay within this, those parameters, so if we take this, it'll, it'll be, it can be spread to the other three?
Well, we don't know that for sure, but that is, that is what he is trying to do, and, and he is fighting for that on our behalf, yes.
All right. Commissioner Jaeger, you wanna?
I, I think that's basically it, we're, we're, you know, and I do think that those monies will stay in Gulf County, so it's easy for me to say, look, we're working on this project to move it, and we'll, we'll apply for other funding, for, once we get that, that moved.
You wanna make a motion?
So moved to send the.
All right, will do. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Got a second by Commissioner Bryan, is there any further discussion with board members? Any discussion with the public? If not, any opposition? No opposition, motion passed five and oh.
The, the other part of that is, we had, I had asked the board to allow me to apply for, for the boating improvement grant for Highland View and Indian Pass. What I am now asking is that I apply only for Indian Pass, for the new located site, if we get the site control. We have to have the site control in place, and then instead of trying to split it and apply for, for grants in both places, since we're still, we're gonna be trying to apply the additional money to Highland View, but I'm asking that we focus the boating improvement grant on Indian Pass, and then if we need additional work at Highland View, we can apply for it next year.
Good deal. You need a motion on that?
Please.
So moved to.
Got a motion, Commissioner Jaeger. Second. Second by Commissioner Bryan, any other board discussion? Any one from the audience, discussion? Any opposition? Not, motion passed, carries five and oh.
That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you. I'm a nothing. Go to our attorney. Mr. Novak, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have this morning is with regards to your jail medical director. The contract with Dr. Pablo is expiring this month. I've reached out to Sacred Heart representatives to notify them and request the ability to do an addendum, conditioned on your approval, so I'd like your authorization to move forward with the contract extension for an additional year with Dr. Pablo for the jail medical director position.
Your extension.
So moved to proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Jaeger, motion?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Smiley, any further discussion with the board? Input from the audience? Any opposition? Not, no opposition, motion carries five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, the second contract is with regards to your health insurance agent of record. Under the contract that our current agent operates under, it's required on an annual basis for the agent to first initiate the offer of interest to the healthcare committee. After receiving that each year, the healthcare committee that just recently met makes the, a motion and a vote to accept that request and a recommendation to you as the commission to extend on an annual basis. This is the last extension, one-year extension under that current contract. The healthcare committee has made that recommendation, and I have that letter from your agent on file, and so I offer to you all the healthcare committee's recommendations for an extension of that, a final year of that agreement.
So moved to extend, Mr. Chairman, it's gone well.
All right, motion by Commissioner Jaeger.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smiley. Any further discussion? I have one question, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
And I'm over that. Do I have to abstain, or can I vote on that?
You, you can vote on that, yes, sir. Because your committee made the recommendation to you as a commission.
All right, I just wanted to clarify. Any further discussion with board members, any, have any input from the audience? If not, any opposition? If no opposition, motion passed five and oh. Okay, continue on.
The next contract issue is with regards to our EMS transport. As I've been updating you over the last two or three months, right now, we've requested the opportunity to sit down with the Sacred Heart representatives. We still haven't received a, a finalized proposal. We've, we've gone away from the contract, and we've focused on a grant proposal from Sacred Heart to supplement and support our EMS in terms of the transports. I know, Mr. Chairman, we have a health trust meeting on Wednesday, we've requested the ability to sit with the Sacred Heart representatives, myself, and get something to come back to you all with, so I've discussed it with Mr. Houston, as well as the administrator. Once we have something, we'll give it to you all from Sacred Heart.
We've been working on this for, I'd say, a year.
Close to it, sir.
EMS services in this county digs into the taxpayer's pocket. Use it, you need to pay for it, and that's all we're, for the audience, just for your update, that's all we're asking Sacred Heart. We transport their patients, they should compensate this county. Good people out there, it's coming out of your pocket, they need to help, put a little back in your pocket. All right, sir.
Next issue is with regards to the road abandonment policy. As you heard during the public hearing, we have a policy in the county, and there's also statute that requires petitioners to apply to the county. In your packet for the upcoming meeting, you'll have a new abandonment road policy in there for your consideration, and it will increase the fees, as well as certified notices to the adjacent property owners. And if you all would review that and consider that for your adoption at your next meeting. The next issue is with regards to the code enforcement hearing. The chairman, you have brought up 355 North Diana Street at prior meetings, I just want, again, we've had sent a notice to some of the adjacent property owners that had inquired with the county, you know, Mr. Aiken's been working on it. That hearing is tomorrow at 1 o'clock here in this room for North Diana Street, the special master hearing for the code enforcement. I just wanted to offer again, we've mentioned the last three meetings, and we're mentioning it again today for anybody that wants to attend that.
All right, it's open. Excuse me, Michael, you have everything in order, are you, are you ready for the meeting? You can just answer right there. Thank you.
The next issue, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is with regards to our beach consolidated ordinance. At the TDC meetings, the last three months, there's been considerable discussion about trying to pull together the various county ordinances over the past two decades that affect our beaches and the visitors and our residents on them, and also to provide our law enforcement and the commission and the public a central location, which you call confined, especially in districts three and five. We're working on that right now to pull those various ordinances. What we're gonna do is pull them all into a consolidated beach ordinance, if you will, so it's codified under one chapter, and then we'll present that to you all after a public hearing, possibly two public hearings, if you all feel it's appropriate to give the public ample opportunity to discuss the various topics. There'll be a bunch of sections under that ordinance, but the idea will be obviously to give the signage that we have on our beaches, the visitors to our community, and the law enforcement, all one place to resource in terms of what can, cannot transpire on our beaches. That leads me to our next ordinance, which is, we had a suitor come to the county and approach the TDC recently about filming and doing some reality shows on Cape San Blas. The TDC director accepted that invitation and vetted it out, has presented to her TDC council, and it was unanimous vote, do not explore.
Do not?
Do not explore.
Okay.
Based on the content, and they made that recommendation, which also led to the next discussion, which is, it's appropriate for this county to consider, if that's the day and age in which we all live, that we adopt some form of filming ordinance for the county to insulate the county in the future, that there are certain standards and requirements that we require if you're gonna come into the county in terms of location fees, types of insurance, what exposure has to the community, and it ties into that beach ordinance. So if people are gonna come to the community and operate businesses and take over locations for weeks on end, it certainly is a job creator that the TDC director presented to the council, but it also extends or exposes the county to liability, and we also wanna have something on the books that gives you local laws on how they can come in and what they can and cannot do. So I'd like your permission to work with the TDC director and advertise a filming ordinance for the county, and that you all would have a public hearing on in the coming months.
So moved to proceed with that drafting of the ordinance and.
It, it's county protection, what it is, you don't know to come in and film, gosh knows what, this day and time.
And, and this day and time, right now, since we don't have an ordinance, there's nothing preventing somebody from coming in and doing it anyway. So once we enact this ordinance, we can, you know, protect ourselves, 'cause we did not want this group.
All right. Got a motion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Jaeger, I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Second by Commissioner Bryan, any further discussion on this? Any other, is there any input or discussion from the audience? If not, if there's no opposition, this motion will pass five and oh. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to follow up on the filming ordinance, we'll prepare that. One of the sections in there obviously requires an application, if you will, to come to the county, it'll come before you all and the TDC for locations. One of the forms in there is going to be a form of an occupational or a business license, and it will be introduced to you all. That topic will be presented in the filming ordinance, which leads into the PDRB, in the past has had hearings on business occupational licenses, you've all had it presented to you before, I wanted to bring it to all your attention, that that will be included in the filming ordinance, specific to that occupation, but it'll also be an introduction of a particular form that you all may consider for occupational or business purposes. We've run into some other issues in the last three or four months in terms of planning with regards to businesses and occupational licenses. The planning board has come up with a proposed form, I think over a year ago, that they've vetted out, and we can certainly provide that along with the filming ordinance to you all for your consideration in the coming month. The next ordinance, after your meeting in beginning of February, there was a motion and approval of the commission with regards to the administrator and his authority and delegation of duties. After that meeting, I had indicated during that meeting, I would review the policies of the past with the county, review the minutes, and see what precedent had been set by the county. I've had an opportunity to do that, as well as speak with the administrator, and what I liked authority to do is to advertise, is to codify the actual policies that you've set in the past, and the authority that you provided the administrator. There is specific state statute with regards to non-charter counties and the administrator's abilities and duties, and I would like the ability to advertise that, introduce it to you all at your coming meeting, and have a public hearing in consideration of your adoption for an administrator ordinance that details and specifically lays out what the administrator's requirements and obligations are and are not.
So moved to advertise and proceed with that process, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger. I hear a second. I hear a second. We have a second by Commissioner Mclemore. Any further discussion from the board? All right, is there any discussion or any input from the audience? Not, if there's opposition to this motion, this motion passed five and oh. Okay, Mr. Novak, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, a month and a half ago, the motion of the commission was to suspend payments with regards to your Economic Development Alliance contract. After that motion of this commission, I had sent a letter explaining under the contract the county's ability to suspend the payment and to notice the areas in which the county liaisons that you had appointed to the Economic Development Alliance would like to focus on under the contract. Since then, the EDA has obliged your county representatives and have met with them under two special meetings in the last two weeks. The first one was being last, two Tuesdays ago after your commission meeting. That afternoon, the EDA held a special meeting, and then most recently, yesterday afternoon, the EDA again had another special meeting as a follow-up. The crux of the discussions was around the letter and the areas in which the contract, the areas of deficiency. The conversations during the first meeting focused on what the EDA could do to meet those contract obligations as you all approached the contract termination, as well as the funding in your budget session. The meeting was scheduled for yesterday afternoon to follow up, and the parties, both the EDA and your county representatives, met to discuss what recommendations or models would work and they, they all could support to you all going forward. Yesterday afternoon, they had a lengthy discussion and ultimately unanimously recommended a model to the county that would mirror the TDC, which is the EDA under contract right now with the suspended payments, would come back under the county's authority and designation, and also made a recommendation, a unanimous recommendation of your EDA, the contracted party, to have the county have direct supervision over that with an advisory council. That was a recommendation of the EDA members, they're here with us today, I believe, if there's any questions of your alliance members. As the contract stands right now, we have not made that January 1st payment of the additional $20,000. There's also a discussion in those meetings with regards to the current financing and funding that they have. Moving forward, your three EDA liaisons, as well as the EDA contracted party, the alliance, would come back to you all presumably with a model in writing in two weeks for you all to accept and move forward with. But today, I just wanted to report to you the motion and unanimous support of the EDA to present that to you, and for you to give us further questions or directions, so that your representatives and the EDA have some direction from you.
All right, do we, I know we have Austin here. Is any, yes, Mr. Gaskin, good to see you this morning. Either you or both like to come up and give any input or any, any to this?
I'm good.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gaskin. All right, it's good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, it's good to see you now. Okay. Back to their attorney.
Any questions or discussion from the commission?
If it's motion, whoever makes it, go ahead. You have the floor, Commissioner. Just a minute. All right, we're gonna put a motion on the floor to...
I'll, I'll second for discussion.
All right, all right, all right. Let me get that. Jaeger, second for discussion, okay? Floor's open.
Um, I, I just have a question. Maybe I missed it when you said it regarding the director. Would that be a county employee position at that point?
Good question.
The model hasn't been entirely fleshed out. I can let the three representatives from the, that you've appointed from the county describe the model in greater detail, but my understanding from those discussions that it would be a county employee or a county, someone under county supervision, that would be your director of an economic development with an advisory council from the discussions. I understand it.
Would that be an existing employee that would take on new duties, or would that be a new county employee?
No, I don't know that, Commissioner.
Um, my, my other question, and, and, Novak, you probably could help me with this one. We've discussed in the past the issues with sunshine and how the EDA is a bit of a hybrid that has the opportunity to meet outside of the sunshine. And my question is, if this is under the county's control and/or we have a county employee as the director, how would that affect their ability to meet outside of the sunshine?
First, that was a discussion point amongst the EDA and the county in those last two meetings of the last two weeks, that the, the history of the EDA was explored by your EDA council, your contractor and the county officials. They all discussed the various models at the county and throughout the region, which is a chamber EDA hybrid. They've also talked about a public-private partnership, which they currently have, and they also discussed the county being the economic development director. The sunshine, right now, they're not subject to sunshine because they're a private contractor. If it comes up under the county, there are sunshine obligations because you now have an advisory board. That advisory board is subject to the sunshine statute, and that director then, obviously with legal counsel, has certain disclosure obligations and confidentiality obligations. If whatever model this county were to accept in economic development, if there was an advisory board that you all appoint, they are all subject, just like all your others, to sign up to sunshine public records policies and be subject to statute. They also need to sign an acknowledgement upfront that then, when they receive confidential information, that there is a dialogue or a discussion, that those things can be kept in confidence. There's correspondence between whoever the economic development representatives you all appoint or hire, they'll have to walk with those guidelines. But there will be sunshine implications on an advisory council and your director.
My, my concerns with moving into this type of a model is that the businesses that are looking to come into Gulf County, I believe, will be hesitant to want to deal with the county. And that's the whole purpose in setting up the EDA as an independent board, that they, the businesses could come in and not be under that governmental bureaucracy. And I, I am against the county being in control of the EDA. I think that we need to be a point of contact and we need to be monitoring that the EDA is functioning. I'm also against having the director be a county employee for the same purpose. And I believe that in order to grow the business opportunities in this county and to be an economic development driver, they need to have some autonomy from the county. Now, we do fund them, so that creates an issue. And the whole idea behind funding them is to move them into a position to be able to be more self-sustaining. And the county does have an interest in funding an EDA that will develop business. Now, we've, we've hit some bumps in the road. Unfortunately, Mr. Sellers was sick and had to return home, and he was doing a magnificent job, and I think he could have really done a lot for Gulf County, but unfortunately, he was sick. Now, I, I've been told that they've received several resumes as a result of industry materials going out that state that Mr. Sellers has returned to Arkansas and that folks are interested in coming here and being our director. I, I would like to see us look at bolstering the EDA in, in a more independent sense. So before we vote, I would like to hear the motion so that I know exactly what we're voting on.
Okay. The motion right, pardon me, the motion at this point is to accept the EDA's recommendation to transfer it back under the umbrella of the county, of the board.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, my second stands to that. And just for the dialogue, I understand all the concerns that the commissioner has. I think at the end of the day, we need to find out what kind of, what kind of deal they want to present to, to our board and, and go from there. I do think, I do think one thing is, is the Florida statutes requires that our, the Board of County Commissioners is, you know, you, you, you're involved in economic development where you want to be or not. It's also imperative that we be involved because we're the ones that's got to approve whatever incentive package goes out to anyone. So I think there's, there's problems with it one way and there's problems with it the other. I, I'm a firm believer, after going through the many changes over the years, I'm a firm believer that when, when there's a company that wants to come to Gulf County, they're gonna, they're gonna come to Gulf County when the economy gets right. We have a great community here, we have, we have great assets, and I think when a, when a, a business wants to come, they're gonna come no matter where the designation is. I'd like to know, I, I think the, the TDC works well in that aspect, and I think in my, in my opinion, she's, she's part of economic development anyway, because our number one economic driver after the prison is, is, is tourism. So I think that, that, you know, obviously, we're involved in that economic development anyway, but I'm, I'm anxious to see what kind of model we come back with and go from there.
Okay. Any further? Yes, sir. Commissioner Smiley.
Three years ago, when I come on this board, we did something, we did with Ed Nelson, we got rid of Ed Nelson. Went out and got Barry Sellers. Now Barry, you know, he got sick, we can't help that. Now we're finna take it back up under the county. Now guys, everybody up here talking got jobs. Everybody up here talking got insurance that's paid by the taxpayers. We got to get on board with this and see what we can do for his job for people. We all got jobs. We could take our time and look, oh, we need to take our time, but we got people out there who need jobs. And I'm, I'm just gonna put it blunt on the table. Since in three years, this has changed three different times. It's about like building a house, you get it all the way just about through and you tap down and build again. Tap down and build it again. And that's basically what we doing. Now, I don't know what the problem is why people can't get along with each other, but our biggest problem here is people can't get along with each other. This one going after that one, that one going after this one, and at the end of the day, they can't even tell you why they going up. And that's the bad part. When we got people around here, I mean, I was just talking to an individual this morning telling her the type of jobs that we had in this community, from the paper mill to the chemical plant, to the coal plant, to the railroad, to the telephone company. And for some reason, we had all these jobs up in here at one time. And like Mr. Jaeger just said, they'll come, but we got to show, you know, we got to give them a good invitation to get them up in here. I, I mean, something is wrong. I ain't figured it out yet, I'm working hard trying to figure it out. But I could see the majority of the problem. We got peoples in here just can't get along. And before they get along with each other to make things better for everybody, they rather leave it in a mess. And I, that's, that's, that's my personal opinion about it, that's what I see in it. And I'm just, I'm just hoping that we could take this right here, man, and, I mean, this is the third time. You talking about wasting money? That's a waste of money. I wish we'd have stuck with Ed Nelson and kept working with him. Because soon as we get something going, I mean, something changed, something else changed. And truly, to be honest with you, we ain't no further than we was when I come in three years ago for us trying to find a job. So that's my, we need to work together, Mr. Chair, I, I, that's my biggest, that's what I see. We need to take our personal feelings and put them to the side. We got some talented peoples in this community. Very talented peoples in this community. And ain't no doubt in my mind, if we get together, we can get something up in here. But quit worrying about I. The one gonna be I. I did this, I did that. I don't wanna be on no pedestal, I don't even want my name called. Let's just get some jobs in here so we can help out some of these people who need help. These people who been paying taxes so this board could survive in the past, just can't pay taxes like they used to pay taxes because they don't have a job. Those people still out there. And them the ones that we need to look at. I'm just, that's my personal opinion on it, and I'm, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Any more discussion? Anything on this? Will you have a motion on the floor to accept the recommendation? Have a second by? Yeah, and discussion, okay. Any more input from the audience? Anyone in the audience? Not, is any opposition to the EDA's recommendation?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Uh, 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 motion passed 4-1. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the other item I have is the Habitat Conservation Plan that presumably we'll get to after the commissioners. I believe, Mr. Jaeger, you're gonna be talking about the Affordability Act insurance. The House built it, sir.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll be talking about that one.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Butler?
Mr. Chairman, I think we have covered everything on my list.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear that, moving along. Okay, thank you, thank you. Sheriff? Okay. This time, we're going into the board business, and I'm going to recognize Commissioner Jaeger. He has some...
Couple items.
Reports to make and some good, good news and, hopefully, good news.
Yeah, there's...
You have it.
Several things. I'll go ahead and talk right to begin with then about the things that we've gotten done and the entire country's got done for the flood insurance. I've spoken with Pat Hardman, House Bill 3370, while we were in DC, got passed, got passed by a, a 300 votes in the House. This is something that, that's, it, it happened because the National Association of Counties, the Florida Association of Counties, many associations and many commissioners were fighting this issue. One month ago, the House of Representatives says, "We're not taking this issue up." Thirty days later, they approved House Bill 3370 that corrected some of the wrongs. I've got a lot of information on that. I'll, I'll put some of it with staff, I know Lynn's not here, but we'll, we'll get it on the website. Tells you about the grandfathering and how it's been back, put back in place and basically rolled back all the, of Big Rip Waters Act that, that put us in this dilemma anyway. But this, this is one, and, and Pat'll tell you, sometimes when you go to talk to bureaucracies and, and, and the House and the Senate and, and then even Florida, it's difficult to get something to move in a year, much less 30 days. And we got this approved in 30 days with all the help. There was one county in particular that was really interested in this in Louisiana, to the point that they're spending $1 million even to counter FEMA flood maps, even after this legislation. In this legislation, it's, it's required that FEMA, if, if it's proved that their maps are wrong, FEMA has to reimburse the county. So they're spending a million dollars and FEMA will have to reimburse them. They know that the, the maps are wrong. That's one of the problem with the whole institution there, is they don't even come to your community, they don't tell you when you're, when they're gonna be doing this review, and then they change your flood maps. I, I myself personally have never been in a flood zone up to two years ago. They put me in a flood zone. And, and my house was built in '69, it's never been flooded. And so, you know, there's a lot in this legislation that, that helps. I think at the end of the day, what this is gonna do is get us to the point that the, the entire country is gonna say, "You know what? We need to put this back into the hands of the private insurers." They will be the ones that would, that their actuaries would run the numbers and the numbers would be right, and they'd be competitive against each other instead of running some numbers that are basically, in my opinion, bogus from FEMA. So we got that passed, and that was one positive that we got to, we got to see while, while we were there. The other thing is, we worked tirelessly on Cobra. Pat, I've, I've talked to Pat a little bit about that. A, a number of meetings that we had, briefly, I'll just, we met with, we met with Brandon Middleton, he's, he's the counsel for the, for the Senior Clean Water Act, he's on the Committee of Environmental and Public Works. We met with Sarah Decker out of Senator Rubio's office. We met with, obviously, Steve and Karen Williams in Steve Sutherland's office, talking about this issue, what they, what they've been on the board all along. He's filed the bill. I'll, I'll have this bill put on the website. It's a short bill, it's basically saying, "We're changing the maps." And, and we're not doing away with Cobra in Cape San Blas, but we're changing the maps that, that puts Cobra where it should be, and that's in the state park and the federal lands that are out there, and, and same way on Indian Pass. So we met with Christopher Day and Lauren Scherer, they're legislative assistant for Senator Nelson. We've, we had already briefed them a year ago on this. We're getting farther along. This bill, probably, we're gonna be, have to testify in April sometime. We met with, you know, it's, it's, it's sad to say, but these committees are even made up with Republicans and Democrats, and they're kind of on, on, on each side, so you have to meet with the staff, with Democratic side and staff on the Republican side. We've done that. I think that we've got the wheels greased. They understand the issue now, where I don't think that they completely understood the issue before. Hopefully, once we get this bill heard before committee in April, we're trying to get it done in this session, which is, you know, a tall order, but, but our lobbyist thinks we can do it. One other issue I wanted to mention while we were up there is, obviously, our lobbyists that we've been paying for last year and a half, two years, to work on this issue. I had an opportunity, being their corporate offices there in DC, to sit down and have a conversation with them. They agreed, and I haven't even told, told Pat this, they agreed that they're gonna reduce by $2,500 a month. They're, what we're paying them...
The group.
It's Ferguson Group.
Ferguson, okay.
Out of, out of DC. So we got a reduction by $2,500 a month for their services till we get this through. Now, I've talked to them about a lot of different issues that I'd like to, I'd like for them to help the port. I'd like for them to do, because they're grant writers too. And so I think we're gonna start working with them on that, even at that reduced rate, so hopefully, we can have a long relationship that's beneficial, and they understood that. So that was great. So it worked out, uh, uh, only problem was the weather. The weather pushed us back a, a day on our meetings. Government shut down in DC on Monday, so, but, but it, it was, we had some successes that we haven't had before. So I appreciate the involvement with staff and other commissioners that, that helped, helped push that, those processes along. And we'll put, we'll put everything we can on the website. Another issue I've got, we've talked about stormwater before in our different areas, but I've got a, an issue on Ponderosa Pines, and I've got staff in here that we went out and looked at it. We, we think we've got a solution for Ponderosa Pines Drive. It's gonna take a little work on, on county right away, but it's gonna take a few, probably some culverts replacement that we need to replace, so it's gonna cost a little bit of money, not a whole lot. And, and I don't know if Mark or, or, or any of you wanna stand up and, and talk to that, but what I'd like for the board to do is allow me to go in there and fix this drainage problem. It's a stormwater issue that, and Barbara can tell you, it's, it's an issue that's been ongoing for a couple of years. We think we found the culprit, we think that we can fix it, and it's probably not gonna take but a day or two to fix it. And so if the board will allow me to do that, we'll proceed with staff on, in doing that. If you want a motion, I'll put it in form of a motion.
Sure, let's, let's go with it.
So, so move to proceed with that process.
All right. Second by Commissioner.
Yeah. Is this a, is this an old subdivision? I'm not familiar with this.
Well, it, it is. Do you know where Mark Moore's old house and some of those Kenny Limmacks and that, that road that they, they live now? It's an old subdivision. If I'm not mistaken, and Loretta can correct me, that may be one close to where Leonard developed originally, but some people have put a driveway in, we're gonna try to correct a, a couple of those. They put a driveway in, they didn't put a culvert in. But, but another one is, we've got a smaller culvert than's required. At the end of the day, I think, and we'll, we'll talk about this at a later date, but I think that we need to revise our culvert permits, and, and the county needs to go back putting them in because we're getting some elevations, we've shot some elevation, we get some elevations when they put them in that, that aren't right. And so I think at the end of the day, we, we, we charge a permit fee for culverts, I think we need to go back to, and I know it's a, it's a strain on, on staff, but we need to go back, when somebody buys a culvert permit, we may need to, we may need to charge enough that we install that culvert for them. And then we know we've got the elevations right, you don't have that issue anymore. Because I think in, in Overstreet, that was a problem in Overstreet. But I, I, we won't, we'll, we'll save that for another discussion another day. I don't wanna muddy the waters, but...
Okay.
How much money we're talking about?
Just a few hundred dollars. You have any, any idea? I, you have any, any idea?
Jake?
Jake? How many culverts we might take? How much money?
It's going to take probably six or seven. I'd say fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay. Well, there you go. It's fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars to fix the problem. Okay.
Okay.
And it's all on county right away. It's all on county right away.
Any further discussion? Board? Any, any from the public? Not as, any opposition? Opposition? Motion passed five and oh.
I wanted to mention that, and I know staff, uh, being has given me some stuff to work on at the state level. I know staff is, is, got some issues. Uh, let us know. Um, I'm, I'm going to meet with, uh, Representative Bashir's and Representative Patronus on Thursday. If there's any issues that we need to push, I know that we got some nine-one-one issues on funding that they're trying to cut. We're going to work on that. Uh, but if there's any issues from staff or any of the public, please let us know before Thursday because we'll meet, be meeting until I ask you. Did you have something else?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I, I.
You still have the problem. Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to go back on the flood issue.
Yeah.
I asked you, does that affect the north end of the county? Because we have that same issue up there too with some properties up there.
Absolutely. It affects the entire country. And this map shows you where most of the effects are, but it, 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 it affects the entire country. And, and the problem was nobody understood how much it was going to affect, say, Montana or, or some of the other. It affects the entire country because FEMA's coming in with these new maps in all these different states. And they're realizing with, with, uh, that it was going to be a problem. It was going to shut down, in Florida especially, it was going to shut down the, the, uh, residential, uh, real estate market. And everybody, everybody realized that.
I think they got everything on the north end of the county under a flood zone.
Well, DEP will tell you that everything in Gulf County is, 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 uh, wetlands, you know, but at, at any rate, we're, we're, we've worked through that issue.
But it does affect, all right, we've got this, uh, what is it? Pond Road or Pine, uh?
Under, Pondros Pines.
That's, what else?
Um, I've got a, in, in Oak Grove, and I'll probably have to get staff involved with this one, but I got a fence that somebody's put across an alleyway. And I want to just go take it down, but the problem with that is I've got it, you know, it's platted. It's a platted alleyway in Oak Grove, but I'm not one hundred percent positive exactly where that alleyway i- is supposed to be. And I'll have to just get staff to, to work with, work with me on this alleyway. Uh, some folks brought it up that live on the alleyway. They want to use the alleyway to access the back of their property and so I've got to get that fence taken down. I, I just, just for information, I'll work with staff on, on trying to do that. Um, another issue, we got an email from DOT. They, they have, they're moving forward on C thirty and ninety-eight. We got the slip lane put back in. There's another, uh, issue that we got with, with, with Pat and him's help. All, all of us pushing forward, we, we, we got fixed. And so I appreciate the board's support on that with letters and resolutions. That's worked out great. Um, I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, we'll just come right off. Commissioner Bryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have, um, I'd like to ask Mr. Novak, um, for an update. I've had some inquiries and I know we all received an email regarding where we are with, um, Michael Spellman, our attorney regarding countywide voting. Could you just?
Uh, be happy to. I spoke to, uh, Michael last week. Um, he, when I was in DC with the commission, uh, had sent a letter indicating his, uh, projected completion date being next month. It's a short letter. Um, I'll place that in the information packet for the commission as well as the community for your upcoming meeting. Um, in, in briefly over, uh, reviewing his letter, and I'll go back just to verify it. Um, but he had indicated it was his expectation he would come down here with a, um, presentation and a report to the community to follow up on the recommendations. Um, you saw in the last consent, there was an invoice there. Um, I think Dr. Bullock, and he's working with another expert in terms of the Voting Rights Act, um, that he's concluding their expert reports, taking that in and then providing you with the legal recommendations to, uh, press forward. I believe, if I recall, it said in April he was intending to come down and present it to you. But I'll get you all that letter so you have that, that upcoming meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smiley?
Yes, uh, I would like to reach out and just thank all the girls and boys that come down from Auburn that helping individuals in the community. They've done a great job and they come down with a smile on their face and, you know, they speaking to everybody and just getting along with everybody. So that's, that's greatly there and I want to, uh, just thank them for getting started on the water project over on the north side of my district and, uh, that's a long time coming, a long time coming. So, uh, other than that right there, those two things where I just really, staff and everybody for working together.
That's great. I think Sheriff McKeithen called about a hundred and something in his traps over there, so they may want to come over here and work off some of their, their tires.
I can guarantee these, these girls.
I know. I've seen it. They do great work.
They, uh, they are, they're not on spring break acting fool. They out doing work helping peoples out and the last couple of days, they said they're going to take a little time off and enjoy our beaches and so.
Good. They've been commanded. Mr. Macklemore? Oh, wait, are you through, Commissioner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Only thing I would, would have was, uh, mention maybe we might want to send them a appreciation letter, Mr. Smiley?
All right.
If that's okay with the board?
Sure.
Let the chairman send it.
All right.
I get the proper.
Grab it up and, you know. All right. All right. I'm good. Mr. Jaeger's covered everything over there. Well, that was, I think he covered mine too. And the chair doesn't have anything. Okay. Let's move on. We take care of board business. We'll go now. Uh, we have some, we have three, uh, I guess firms come today to make a presentation and I've asked them, we will limit to, we're going to extend them to a ten-minute timeframe. Give them ten. You already have. And, do what?
May I be excused on?
Yes, sir. All right. Here, you may want. All right. Are you going or are you going to come back?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. All right. All right. Wait just a minute. We're moving forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Do what?
Do you, do you, do you want to take a few minutes recess to get the audio visual?
Yeah. Just call about a five-minute recess. Hopefully, if anyone needs to go to the restroom, stand up and stretch, if you're late, we'll call them five seconds. I'm going to, I'll fill it up. Go get drunk or something.
I'll be back.
I'll be back.
Yeah.
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 Okay. Let's, uh, if everyone would, please take your seat.
Yeah.
Something to order?
Yeah.
Yeah, I am. I'll take care of that.
There you go.
All right.
Hey, Chairman, we're on one of these things.
Okay. All right. Our meeting is back to order. The first presentation will be done by, uh, Sheeta Ecological and their representatives is Ms. Sandy, uh, Russell. Where's Joe? Right there.
Mr. Chairman.
All right. Either one, all or whatever, if you want to come up before the, uh, board, make your presentation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, before, if you guys, if you folks, you just give me one minute?
Sure.
I just wanted to introduce the RFQ process so the commission understands what we're going about to do? If I may?
Sure, sure. I'm sorry. I should.
Oh, it's fine. It's fine. Um, turn those lights back on. I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Don't confuse you.
You know, Jerry.
I just can't read.
Yeah. You're mine.
Uh, Commissioners, um, as the chairman just indicated, we have three, uh, in, uh, groups here today. Uh, this is a culmination of your Habitat Conservation, uh, Multi-Species Plan. Uh, going back two years ago, Commissioner Jaeger, uh, the administrator, myself, uh, were working with Fish and Wildlife to secure, um, a grant agreement that would, uh, in part fund through in-kind match from the county as well as contributions from US Fish and Wildlife and the state Fish and Wildlife to do a Habitat Conservation Plan for Gulf County. Uh, the county did one ten years ago. It, uh, had, was submitted then and, and is still, what we understand, waiting, review and approval. Um, it was a recommendation that, uh, we secure this grant. Uh, we went through the contract process starting last April. Um, we ultimately had a final contract for the grant agreement ratified in May of last year and you all accepted that. It was signed in June. Um, after that, uh, we began the process of organizing and working through the Habitat Conservation Grant Agreement. Um, the step in that process was we formed an organizational meeting back in October and we had an overwhelming response in the EOC building. We had over, I believe, twenty-five, uh, representatives from US of Fish and Wildlife, state Fish and Wildlife, county employees, um, various sectors of business throughout Gulf County, uh, realtors, builders, um, various businesses and homeowners from both the Cape and St. Joe Beach. Um, at that meeting, uh, the structure of how we would move through this process and grant, uh, Habitat Conservation Plan would work, uh, is the first order of business was to sign on for a technical consultant. Um, we came back to you all on November twelfth as a commission and you all appointed a technical advisory committee. That technical advisory committee consisted of US Fish and Wildlife, state Fish and Wildlife and county staff. Um, after that, the TAC, as we called them, uh, organized and formulated an RFQ. Last week, I provided you all a copy of that RFQ via email so you all familiarize yourselves with the standards that are going to be required of these consultants today. Uh, the RFQ was advertised in the beginning of December. The original deadline for submission was December twenty-seventh. With the holidays upon us and the county being, uh, closed, we extended that with your approval till January seventeenth. Uh, there was various, uh, vendors that submitted their RFQ specs and they have submitted them all to the TAC. The TAC met on February sixth, again on the eighteenth, again on February twentieth, in evaluating the, um, various consultants. Your RFQ that I provided you all had a specific scoring criteria and in that criteria, uh, the TAC evaluated independently all nine members and provided scores. That final tabulation sheet was provided to you at the last meeting and the three highest, uh, consultants, uh, were provided to you, were recommended to come in for presentations and they've all accepted that invitation and are here today. Um, I've provided you all a tabulation and presentation sheet. Uh, the last step in the two-hundred-and-twenty-point process and evaluation is this commission's evaluation. I'd ask, um, the final step in this process is for you to hear each of the presentations. They've been limited to ten minutes from each of the consultants. Uh, following your, uh, receipt of their presentations, you all have a tabulation sheet. I'd ask you all to rank and list your three, uh, consultants on the sheet that I provided you all. Prior to five o'clock, close of business today in the county administration office, I'd ask you to give that to Mr. Butler, the administrator. He is the chairman of that technical advisory committee. He'll provide those to Ms. Lanier. The final tabulation sheet will be, um, assembled and we'll have our final recommendations for you on your consultant. Uh, that is how we got here today. Um, it's been a long process, but it's been very involved, um, and there's been a thorough vetting of all the contractors. Um, some of the discussions leading up to today with regards to insurance, workers' comp, things of that nature, I hope you've all had an opportunity to review the RFQ that was sent out. Uh, there's two pages specifically in RFQ with regards to workers' comp certificate, commercial general liability, commercial auto liability, special requirements and evidence of insurance leading up to today in the presentations. Um, it, the responsibilities of the, each contractor to provide all those certifications. Um, in addition to that, on the third page of the requirements for workers' comp and insurance that the county required of each of these contractors, there's also an additional provision for professional liability insurance of a million dollars for each consultant service. Um, each of these vendors have submitted these documents in, in preparation for today. We have it as part of their packets, um, and we have that as we move forward. Uh, before we introduce them, Mr. Chairman, is there any questions with regards to RFQ process and how we arrived today's presentations? Okay. Okay.
Any question?
I'm sorry. The last thing on the form here is, in the RFQ process, the final step is the commission has the ability for presentation, which is 100 points. Exercising that option in your RFQ, you all have the allotment of 80, 90, or 100 points. And according to the presentations you all received today, you each individually award your first presenter, who you feel individually as a commissioner, 100 points, the second the 90, and the third the 80. And then I'd ask you all to provide those in confidence to the administrator before the close of business today.
Just for the audience, these people that are going to come before us, three of them, all ranked right within a point or two, and so that's where we're at here. Had it been spread or different, we wouldn't be here, but that's the purpose. We want to be fair, give them opportunity, and we'll select there. The board will make the selection.
If there's no questions, I'd ask you to have them off of their presentations. We can open to the public for any comments or questions, and then I have a few comments just to wrap it up then, sir.
All right. Okay. We're ready to go then. We're going to bring up who first. Shada, is that correct? Okay. Sandy, Russell, and Joe, please come forward. And you're going to put something on the screen. We can catch who we've got back there. Yeah. Play it.
You guys stand by the microphone. Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman, commissioners, county professionals, technical reviewers, and members of the community. We are really excited to be here today because your scope of services speaks right to what we do as a core business every day. We're ecologists, and we're ecologists that made good use of GIS analyst tools. I opened the firm myself in 1990. We're a small business, and we're a public sector servant firm. 90% of our income comes from working on local government projects, just like yours. As such, we have a lot of experience in stakeholder-driven projects. Russ is our local project manager. He has 16 years of experience. Throughout his career, I have known him, worked with him, and watched him grow as a project manager. He's very dynamic, extremely creative, as you're going to see from the GIS tool today, and he brings his wealth of coastal ecological experience to this team. And he's going to continue the presentation.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
All right. Chairman, commissioners, thank you very much. As first goal in addressing this project was putting together a well-qualified team, so I just want to briefly go through a few key members and the attributes, what they provide to this team. If you could advance a slide once, please. As you met Sandy Shada, she's been, she's our NEPA expert, and she's been a lead author on hundreds of NEPA documents that cover a spectrum activity, and we'll be looking to her for the NEPA strategic guidance on this project. Advance the slide. Tom Reese is an award-winning coastal habitat restoration designer, manager. Has authored a number of land management plans and habitat restoration, and he'll be the QAQC officer on this and contributing to the conservation measures as needed. Advance. And I'd also like to introduce Dr. Joe Walsh. He's a member of our team who's got 14 years of leadership experience in habitat conservation planning and restoration, dealing with these threatened and endangered species, and he is, brings 14 years, but around 10 or more that has tenured as the regional director in the FWC, and he is key in that time, taking care of a lot of partners, partnering in the public-private partnerships, brokering agreements with the public, and is very strong. Also recognize the need in this project. Got Matt Trammell on board. He's a senior coastal engineer, very familiar with the coastal systems of the Panhandle and the region, including this county, strong modeling experience, and felt that would be invaluable when it comes to scoping the impacts that are covered under this HCP, to inform everybody on the coastal processes and bring that local knowledge. And I've also got nine years of collaborative experience with Matt in dealing with some of these projects, too, so we go way back. You might have noticed Senior Counsel in here. I think it's important. The member that we have on our team, Clay Henderson, member of Holland and Knight, he and his team literally wrote the book, The Legal Handbook, on the Endangered Species Act, and has dealt with incidental take permitting and habitat conservation plans, and he's here to provide legal advice on the framework. Not something we anticipate to be through the project, but upfront to make sure that it's NEPA compliant and that at the end that this thing will be legally defensible. And I'd also like to bring Joe up here to talk about some of the technical aspects of the HCP.
Thank you, commissioners, audience. Thank you very much, Dr. Joe Walsh. Just a couple of clarifications and corrections on how Russ introduced me. So I was never a regional director, and you guys that know Louis Roberson would know that. I worked in the Everglades for 10 years. So I was the Fish and Wildlife Commission's lead from a technical and policy perspective for ecosystems restoration for most of 10 years, and then later got into county comprehensive planning, and so I was actually supervising a lot of activities that were also going on up here. I had staff working on the Appalachia Cola Chattahoochee River War, for example. But what I want to stress from my experience is that the first 10 years that I was working in Florida, I saw a lot of these types of projects, and the ones that are successful are successful because of the partners, and the ones that fail, the ones that ignored that dynamic. That is a very important part of how this is going to succeed, and I was very pleased to see that you guys had written a broad enough scope to enable that to take place. So your steering committee is going to be made up of U.S. Fish, Fish and Wildlife Commission. I would expect probably DEP will be on this, but they're all permit agencies, so it's an important part of this, and they, obviously with the beaches and coastal systems HCP that FDP is doing, that is also going to affect how you proceed with your HCP. Again, I cannot stress enough, the success of this will be driven by how you approach partners. I'm thinking, for example, of the Port of St. Joe, which is a vested economic interest. You have a community that, after it went into the ground, actually was designated as critical habitat by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for the St. Andrews Beach Mouse. They have a very heavily vested interest in the success of an HCP here. And then your other partners, for example, state parks. I have seen some of the coastal HCPs actually ignore conservation lands owned by state and federal government to their demise, and so I was really happy to see that you guys included the opportunity to work with all of the conservation units within your county. Next slide, please. We're going to be, as you asked, looking at all of the coastal resources and then as, and then defining that closer to the needs of the HCP. It will be butting up against the Coastal Construction Control Line, which is where the boundary is for the HCP that DEP is applying for, and so these are running concurrent, and there needs to be coordination with that other HCP to make sure that you're getting what you need, because the Fish and Wildlife Service will not allow them to overlap. So there needs to be communication between the two. Next slide, please. The FWC provided a very broad list of potentially affected species. The Fish and Wildlife Services focal species, the ones that you actually named in your RFQ, are very clearly under the Section 10. The FWCs is a broader list of species that may come into play, and we will help you refine that list, the ones that actually need to be included by this coastal systems HCP. Activities. The activities to be covered will include both the impact-oriented activities, so these are the coastal construction, public access, potentially climate-oriented events that may be impacting on you, as well as the proactive ones, the management actions that you can take to drive the HCP. Next slide, please. Scoping of the impacts and the analysis. I really see this, first, this RFP, as a feasibility study for that broader HCP that you guys have identified as needing to get a full scoping and a schedule for. So at the end of this process, we should have enough information for you to determine whether going into a full HCP is in your interest, one, and two, whether or not we're talking about an environmental assessment level or a full-blown environment impact statement associated with your HCP. And then I'm going to turn this back over to Russ as our GIS expert.
That's right. Yes, sir. Task seven, I think this is addressed, it's almost a project within the project, where the county in their scope specified that they were looking for bringing together, updating the conservation information to support the planning process, to update the county's conservation overlays, and also to facilitate broader access to the public. And we'll start the programming with bringing in the public data sets that we anticipate and the agencies will be looking for, the ones on the screen, looking, working with the steering committee to identify the gaps, possibly using field surveys to capture those. And I think the most novel aspect of what we're trying to do here is on this delivery is using Esri ArcGIS Online, which is the premier GIS software that most people are familiar with. If you could advance to the next slide, just a little bit about it, not to take too much time, but ArcGIS Online is essentially the new direction. It supports exactly the kind of planning activity that's taking on here. It's cloud-based. I think the important thing to walk away with, from with this, is that the traditional aspect that most people approach these projects with is hosting these on their own servers within the organizations. This gets it up into the cloud. It's secure. It's easily transferable, and it's a low-cost transfer option at that time when it comes across. And it's also easily accessible on mobile devices. It's easy to get the message out there with this, and it's very easy for everybody to tap into. On the next slide, we've basically set up a live link. We mentioned that in our proposal, that we stood prepared to provide a live demonstration. If anybody wants to take a test drive on this, we can do it at the end. And also, if you just type in Gulf County HCP on Google, it'll be in the top five search results, and you can just hit it from there. And I'm going to turn it back over to Joe.
So, so in the end, in order to have a viable HCP, you're going to have to show the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service what conservation measures will actually drive the long-term success here after a permit that may last 20, 30, maybe even 50 years. And so there's some tools here that you may not be thinking about. One of those will be adaptive management in the face of sea level rise. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has now integrated that into their planning documents. So it's going to be challenging, but some of the other things that you can think about is you might be a vehicle for funding habitat restoration, for example, on the state park. That might actually be one of your mitigation options. Predator control and then human access activities to the beaches. Maybe one more minute? Two? We have a couple of slides?
Yeah. You can make them.
Okay. Next slide, please. So you've asked us, go ahead, Rusty, because you and Sandy for now, huh?
All right, yeah. At the, at the end, we'd certainly make sure that we wrap this up with a schedule for completion with the HCP, and I'd like to just advance back through these slides. We're all familiar with the species, so we're just going to roll through this here to maximize our minute. If you could advance a few more frames. We've all seen these guys. That's a new one. Right here on issue awareness, I just want to let you guys know that we are familiar with the Panhandle, that we are familiar with some of the issues that I think this HCP vehicle may be able to address, and something we want to look at. The upcoming renourishment schedules for St. Joseph Beach restoration, the barriers presented with the Cobra units out there, stump hole revetment. It's vital to St. Joe Peninsula and the economic development. It'll have a structural, a structural solution in there, and knowing that the agencies are also interested in maintaining that overwatch that comes through on those areas. So the HCP is a good vehicle for that and possibly NRDA planning. And why Shada? Again, I just want to stress that we're locally available to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tried to roll it in there, so. Thank you very much.
Our next presentation will, from Ecological Associates. Have a representative.
He's waiting in the hall.
All right. Would you, someone please step and get the gentleman.
Please, you can get.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. You have a slide presentation.
We do. We do.
You do? All right. Well, just a minute, then, Mr. Richardson over here. This is your.
Well, first of all, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, good morning. My name is Bob Ernest, and I'm president of Ecological Associates. And in one second, we'll have our slideshow up here. And I did bring with me this morning Ms. Amy Knight of the Florida Natural Areas Inventory out of Tallahassee. She's one of our team members. There you go. One up, one up from that. There you go. And you'll see Gulf County HCP, presentations, and the top, top presentation. There you go. Okay. So again, we're Ecological Associates, not Shida Ecological Associates, so there's no confusion there. As our logo implies, we're probably best known for our work with sea turtles, although we provide a broad range of environmental services. My business partner, Eric Martin, and I are both native Floridians, and we've got over 70 years of combined professional consulting experience here in the state of Florida. You know, I was actually a little surprised when we were notified that we were shortlisted. I thought our proposal was going to win outright, and hopefully I can demonstrate to you why you should select Ecological Associates as your consultant. We have more practical experience preparing large-scale HCPs in Florida than any other firm. We've prepared all four countywide HCPs, coastal HCPs here in Florida. The first one was in Volusia County. Of course, Daytona Beach is known for its beach driving, and when you mix a million vehicles on the beach each summer along with several hundred turtle nests, there's pretty high potential for problems. And so we were part of a team that helped prepare their original HCP back in the mid-'90s, and they got an incidental take permit for that. However, it only had, excuse me, only had a five-year duration, and we were retained by the county to amend their HCP and extend the term of the permit, which we did successfully, and that permit was for 25 years, issued in 2005. Next slide, please. Do I have a remote here, or is it? Next slide. That's good. In Indian River County, the issue involved issuance of emergency permits for shoreline armory. The county had issued several permits back in '96 for properties along critically eroded sections of beach, and they were later challenged by outside interests claiming that the sea walls were illegal and were causing harm to sea turtles, which was a violation of the Endangered Species Act. So EAI was contracted by the county to pursue an HCP and apply for an incidental take permit, and that effort was successful. Permit was issued in 2004 for a 30-year period. Similar to the other two counties, St. John's County was getting a lot of outside pressure to obtain an incidental take permit for beach driving and other activities that they managed, and people claimed that that was doing harm to the sea turtles and beach mice. Again, EAI was called in, and we successfully obtained an incidental take permit with a 25-year direct duration. Most recently, EAI was contracted by Walton County to prepare an HCP for emergency permitting of sea walls. After the passage of Hurricane Dennis back in 2005, they issued almost 200 emergency permits that resulted in three and a half miles of beach being armored. And as you might expect, outside interests challenged those actions. A lot of the sea walls did not conform to state law. Again, we were brought in and prepared an HCP. The Board of County Commissioners approved that plan in 2011, but the ITP is still pending. So given this depth of practical experience, I suspected that perhaps there were some other issues that didn't elevate us above the other competitors, and perhaps one of those is our size. We're probably the smallest firm before you this morning. However, this year, we celebrate 20 years of business here in Florida, and we continue to grow every year. We're financially stable and in good standing with all of our suppliers and creditors, and as demonstrated by the financial statements that we submitted in support of our proposal, we have a substantial cash reserve as well as an active line of credit. More importantly, we have an excellent reputation for the quality of services that we provide. Most of our clients have been with us for many, many years. We have three multi-year continuing services agreements with three different counties, and we have both large and small private sector clients. Florida Power and Light Company, the state's largest utility provider, has been with us for all 20 years that we've been in business. So another concern may have been our location. We are located in Jensen Beach over on the East Coast, but that, you shouldn't infer from that, we're somehow isolated from Gulf County. A good example of that is back in 2010 after the BP Deepwater Horizon oil spill. We were the only firm that was brought in by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and National Marine Fisheries Service to help with sea turtle recovery efforts. We, within two weeks of receiving the contract, we had mobilized trucks, trailers, ATVs, and set up two bases of operation up here in the Florida Panhandle. Ms. Nikki DeJardin of our staff and who will be assisting with the Gulf County HCP, worked on the beaches up here in the summers of 2010 and 2011. She established really good relationships with the local sea turtle folks in your county. And of course, we successfully completed an HCP for Walton County, so that just demonstrates that we don't need to be sitting here in Port St. Joe to effectively produce a quality product for you all. These HCPs don't require a lot of field effort. They basically use existing information, and so they're desktop exercise. And now with all the technological capabilities for teleconferencing and file transfer, working remotely really is not a problem. So let's talk a little bit about the EAI team. I think you have a pretty good idea of who we are. We have two subcontractors, the Natural Areas Inventory, or EFNA, and Geodeshine Technologies. The Florida Natural Areas Inventory is an affiliate of FSU, and they are the repository for all types of information regarding the state's natural resources. They catalog occurrence data for plants and animal species that are reported by the various agencies and research groups. Geodeshine Technologies is a leader in scenario planning and simulation modeling using GIS or geographic information systems. Their models can project the impacts of things like coastal development and erosion on the habitat of protected species over the term of the HCP, and that's really important when you're trying to calculate the amount of take that's going to occur as a result of the county's various activities. So this team has all the resources that Gulf County needs to prepare the HCP. Right now, the same EAI team is part of a working group that's developing the Florida Beaches HCP. It's a statewide HCP that addresses impacts to protected species from activities that are permitted under the DEP's Coastal Construction Control Line program. And as part of that project, we've developed information and conservation strategies for 19 different species, including sea turtles, beach mice, nesting birds, shorebirds, and the gopher tortoise. And the benefits to Gulf County that result from our involvement in the Florida Beaches HCP are pretty substantial. EFNA has already assembled the most current data available on all of the species that will be included in the Gulf County HCP. They have held workshops with subject experts to ensure that the data are up to date, complete, and accurate, and we've also identified threats of coastal development, and have begun fashioning minimization and mitigation strategies. And those can also be applied to the Gulf County HCP. One thing we're also looking at are opportunities to integrate countywide HCPs with the Florida Beaches HCPs, and I think there will be benefits to Gulf County from the simultaneous development of those two plans. And finally, through our participation on the Florida Beaches HCP, we've developed really strong personal relationships with staff of the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, DEP, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, all of whom are active members on the working group, and many of these same people will be, likely be key players in reviewing in the county's HCP. Now, I've used this slide in probably every HCP presentation I've given. A good HCP has something to offend everyone. I mean, ultimately, the goal of the ITP is to ensure compliance with Endangered Species Act, but in the process, there's a lot of compromise that takes place. There's a lot of negotiation that goes on. The agencies are looking to maximize the protection of natural resources. The county is looking out to protect longstanding traditional land uses, as well as taxpayer dollars, and stakeholders don't want their way of life abridged. In the end, everyone has to give a little, and we've become very adept at seeing that process through fruition. So to sum things up, I think I've demonstrated that we have a record of success in developing HCPs and obtaining. HCPs and obtaining incidental take permits. No other firm has a practical experience with coastal HCPs in Florida as EAI. We've established excellent working relationships with all the agencies and staff that will be reviewing the county's plan, and we've always been a strong advocate for unique local interest. And EAI's reputation and experience in the HCP arena brings enormous credibility to the table when we sit down and begin negotiating with the agencies. So hopefully, I've made a persuasive argument as to why we should be selected as your consultant, and I'll open it up to any questions. Bingo, 10 minutes on the dot.
Anyone from the audience, any staff having questions?
Well, it's, it's very difficult to get a lot of information across in 10 minutes, and I have given each of you a packet that really talks in greater depth about the HCPs that we've worked on and the Florida Beaches HCP, and so hopefully, you'll have a chance to peruse that information and, as you make your decision.
Okay. Cardinal, Cardino? It's right here. All right.
Yes, sir, I am, and I understand one of your staff are going to be the clicker for me, so.
All right.
I will. Sure, you know, and I'll try and give, give some sort of direction as to how to, how to move along there. Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, good morning. My name is Ray Lorraine. I'm a senior project scientist with Cardinal Entrix, an environmental consulting firm headquartered in, in Tampa. I'm pleased to provide our qualifications today to, to be your consultant for the Habitat Conservation Plan Development. Next slide. What I'd like to do in my talk is really, hopefully, impress three things upon you. Number one, an understanding of our, understanding of the process. We, in addition to the HCP process, we have worked in North Florida in the Panhandle for many years and are familiar with the coastal communities and, and the species in them. And lastly, we have put together a team that should understand issues that are important to Gulf County. We're, we're including on our team Preble Rish and Southeastern Consulting Engineers as subconsultants, and we think that brings a very important aspect to our team. Next slide. Cardinal Entrix is a national firm. We have over 1,000 staff and 45 offices, but we've been in Florida for about 40 years, previously as biological research associates. We have about 100 staff and seven offices statewide in Florida right now, including the Panhandle in, in North Florida. We have an office of about nine in Tallahassee, a small office of a single individual in Panama City. So again, we, as a firm, have worked in Gulf County and, and the Panhandle, but we also have our, our subconsultants as members of the team that bring a, bring a, a great contribution as well. Next slide. We are unique, I believe, in the firms that you've heard from this morning in that regionally and nationally, we have conducted over 40 large-scale HCPs. Most of those have been done out west in California, Nevada, the Pacific Northwest, where these processes, this permitting process has been ongoing for many, many years. In Florida, it's started in the early 1990s with some, with some beach mice and, and sea turtle projects, and has gone forward from there. Our projects have covered over 150 different species. Out in California, they require permits for things like butterflies and tiger beetles up to humpback whales. Those projects have, have covered over 13 million acres. Our fees on those is over 3 million. Lincoln County has a project in Nevada that dealt with desert tortoises and a fly catcher. The Super Ferry Project in Hawaii was required by the National Marine Fisheries Service for impacts of a high-speed ferry on humpback whales and sea turtles. In Sacramento, we provided a different service. We actually have economics experts, economists on our staff, and for that project, they did the budgeting for the HCP, figured out the cost to implement the HCP, and then how to pay for that over the 30-year life of the project. Next slide. In addition to our national level, and I recognize that folks out west may not help you necessarily, but they actually bring, bring much to our team. In Florida, again, we've been doing listed species work as a core service that we provide for over 40 years. I recently managed the Charlotte County Economics Analysis for their HCP, where we presented about a half a dozen different funding options to the board, and, and they used those to select one that was economics for their residents in terms of permitting single-family homes. Wingate Mine was a large land tract that dealt with scrub jays, tens and hundreds of acres there. We've also done many, many other large-scale permitting projects for the phosphate industry, for theme parks over in the Orlando area, not necessarily under the HCP process, but through Section 7, another permitting avenue. And we have experience with beach mouse projects up here in the Panhandle through our work here. Next slide. The HCP is part of the incidental take permitting process that ultimately will lead to a permit that authorizes take a listed species for otherwise lawful activities. That's important to Gulf County because it provides you all with legal protection, and it provides your residents who partake in the plan with legal protection. I put this flow chart up here not to get into the weeds on every one of these boxes, but to demonstrate it is a complex and potential controversial process. I think you all know that. It's going to rely on the best available scientific and commercially available data. Your consultant team need not be experts in every species of beach mice and every sea turtle, but they do need to be experts in how to find that data with, with the help of the regulatory agencies and, and other academics, and then integrating that into your plan. Stakeholder involvement, landowner involvement is key. If you don't work that out, your, your HCP likely will, will not succeed. The plan has to be scientifically and economically sound, and a big, big challenge on many plans is the economics. Lastly, if you get through that process, the payoff is it'll really streamline the permitting process in the future. Gulf County will administrate that plan. They, your residents won't have to wait on permitting out of Fish and Wildlife Service in Panama City that may take two years and tens of thousands of dollars their, their waste to implement that, work it into your permitting and review process. Next slide. Just quickly, a little bit about our team, and I'm not going to go into detail on every one of those boxes, but we like to select a compact team of people that are highly qualified in areas that need to be addressed. Steve Godley, our principal in charge, has 35 years of experience in Florida. I have over 30 years with listed species permitting, 26 in Florida. Rob Knutson is a, an advisor. He's actually out in California, but he's worked for over a decade on large-scale HCPs covering over 65 species for the energy industry, so he's familiar with how these work. Again, the other boxes are the key tasks that will need to be addressed. That's a combination of staff from our Tallahassee office, Tampa, and Sarasota, where I'm at, and then our subconsultants, Preble Rish and, and Southeastern Consulting Engineers. Next slide. We can probably just go over that. Again, that's just a little re- reiteration. You know, we've got several hundred years' worth of experience in that flow chart I showed you. Last slide. So why us over the other two highly qualified teams that you've heard from this morning? And I, I must say, I think you all are in a good position, you know, between the three of us. We've been doing this work for a long time. The agency folks know us, we know them, they have our respect and, and trust. Again, we've worked on many large-scale HCPs throughout the country. We have a lot of experience both with HCP under Section 10 and with Section 7 here in Florida. We use a science-based approach, and that really is important because that creates the file of record that, that will support the project and, and prevent challenges if there are legal challenges. We prepared a compact team of qualified individuals. It was important to me that we brought together local folks that could help share the concerns that are unique to this county, and, and we have the right tools internally to manage the project, to bring it in on time and budget, and, and, and prepare a, a quality product. Lastly, we're strong client advocates. Some agencies don't like us for that, but that's not something that we apologize for, whether it's a, a government like Gulf County, or whether it's a private client. We support our clients' positions. And I guess the one thing I would leave with you, you're getting federal money for this project, it's being administered by Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission in Tallahassee, but at the end of the day, this is your plan, to serve Gulf County and, and protect its residents. And so, you know, I, I would leave you with that, that you, you want to pick a team that's going to not write DEP's plan or Fish and Wildlife Service's plan, but your plan. With that last slide, I think some pretty pictures of bugs and bunnies, and if I have any questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the audience, anyone? We had three good, pleasant questions here.
Do you have anything else for the rest of us? Do we need to bring them back in?
Nah.
Y'all, y'all done, you've heard enough, move on with the process.
If, if we could, if, if we, if you don't mind, Ray, having the folks come back in so they can hear the remainder of the process. Mr. Chairman, while they're doing that, I just wanted to note for the record, I know some folks left, but I guess, Carrie, you do have the minutes. We recessed for five minutes, and then we came back in to open public meetings, so I don't know if some folks thought we had adjourned or what have you, but I just wanted to make sure it was clear on the minutes. We did recess for five. Mr. Chairman, as the three consultants and firms come back in, I just wanted to recap. You have a tally sheet in front of each of you. Before 5 o'clock today, as I mentioned earlier, if you can provide to the administrator, who is the chair of the Technical Advisory Committee. As I mentioned earlier, it's a five-and-a-half-month process. You all have a copy of the RFQ. They've worked diligently and met on countless hours to form the RFQ, to vet out the RFQ, and now to make recommendations to you all on these consultants. And I think you've heard three very quality presentations today that you all can make your ultimate determinations on. You will not be making any motions with regards to the forms that you have in front of you. I would ask that you provide a motion today to authorize myself to work with the Technical Advisory Committee. After a final evaluation and tally is concluded, that we notify that consultant, and that I begin to establish and formulate a contract so we can move forward. We've contacted Fish and Wildlife representatives and let them know that we will anticipate an extension on this grant agreement. I think the end of June is your deadline. The consultants all here reviewed the grant agreement and acknowledged that that was the deadline, but I'm offering, also offering, so they all know that we're all working conjunction to get that extension with Fish and Wildlife, to move the date back. It has been an involved process. Just so you all know, your Technical Advisory Committee consisted of Rebecca Fowler, Tom Ostrtag, Jennifer McGee, and Kristi Yankis from Fish and Wildlife, both U.S. and state, as well as several department heads, your administrator here on the county level, Mr. Butler, Denise Manuel, Tawon Kapinski, Sherry Herring, and Lynn Lanier, all, also consisted of those nine members of your Technical Advisory Committee, as I mentioned, invested a great deal of time. They all were active participants in that review. I don't know if any of the advisory committees, four of the five that are here, Ms. Manuel, or Ms. Kapinski, Ms. Herring, is there anything that you wish to add in the evaluation process as a TAC? Mr. Butler?
Like I mentioned, just everyone knows, it was very in-depth. It was probably the most in-depth I've been involved with, working with the county. We, we took a lot of time, the, the agencies, we met several times with them, with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and FWC, and, and I think it's, in the end, whatever the end number is, is going to be as close as it can get. We, we can't, we have five forms, these three came in, almost equal, based on what you guys gave us today. We just simply plugged those numbers in, and it is what it is at that point down.
Mr. Chairman, other than that, just wanted to thank the vendors for, obviously, they've come from far and away, some, and have made quite a, a travel to come. If, and like I said, I just, again, if I can emphasize the, the import of this HCP, it's been a long process, but it's also, you know, I see a lot of the folks from the audience have left. This will impact Gulf County, obviously, for decades to come, and so, the steering committee that will have work with this consultant after you select the contractor will work over the next couple of months, obviously, to formulate something that Fish and Wildlife can accept, but it will be an involved process, so I just thank you for that.
All right. Anything else from the audience, anything? We need to, yes, Dr. Hardman, please.
Pat Hardman, just very quickly, the Habitat Conservation Plan, I don't know that our residents understand the depth and how much this is going to affect people in the county. There could be unintended consequences. We could create a new endangered species, particularly in South Gulf County, called a Homo sapien homeowner. You have no clue the cost that can happen to the county or a built homeowner with this type of plan. I would encourage you to, everyone that you have on these committees are endangered species-oriented. I would encourage you to bring some partnerships to the table that are oriented towards homeowners and, and development and tourism as well, because if not, we're definitely weighted. Not, they don't love those little creatures, but we live here too. So I'm just a cautionary remark. Second thing I'd like to ask you to do is, for some reason, the notice of meetings are not being sent out as they were. I'm not receiving the notice of meetings, and I was using the Coastal Community Association to get that word out to county residents of what was coming up in special meetings or putting the agendas out and the information out. And I think an informed public is extremely important. It's not, there's no cost involved. I mean, they're clicking to send them to you, they can click to send them to me. There's nobody having to mail out anything. It's actually a savings, and we're, we're promoting what you're doing. And I, I think that I would ask you to please ask the clerk of court to include those of us in the private sector, again, with the notice of meetings, the agendas, the mailouts, et cetera.
Okay. Let me turn over here right quick. Carrie, you help this people out with this?
I believe Clerk Norris addressed this, I believe it was maybe at the last meeting. The public is noticed on our email list. It goes to the papers, it's noticed at the courthouse, and I believe it's also on the county's website. So it is out there in electronic format, but we are no longer maintaining that email list.
And I see no reason not to.
Yes, please, right over here.
And we, we did talk about this, I think it was the last meeting, and Ms. Norris did say that she would consider sending the notices out again. And I think if she refrained from sending out the agenda, because the agenda's on the website, but I, I still believe that we need to go back to Ms. Norris and encourage her to take on maintaining that email list, to send out notices only, so they wouldn't be large files, but particularly with our special meetings and emergency meetings, if people don't come and look at the, the window or look on the website every day, they, they don't know. And I, I agree with you, Dr. Hardman. It is just the utmost, it should be at the top of our list, that our public is informed and a participant in everything we do.
Again, I would ask that the files, the agendas be sent as well, because if not, we don't know what's coming up, and we don't have the information in front of us. Sending a file is, is not, that's a click, y'all. This is not, this is electronic age, and, and I, the perception is y'all don't want people to know what you're doing, and that's not, not true.
Oh, no.
That's not true, but that's perception. And, and it's stronger than truth whenever we don't get information about special meetings.
Okay. We'll address that.
The, the last thing I have is, is really important, after these two. The sheriff decided to play Santa Claus at Christmas, and he went out and got some demented elves, and they threw a party down at the golf club and had a tournament, and then they raised more toys. toys throughout South Gulf County and the whole county, with the South Gulf County Fire Department and Coastal Community Association never been brought in. Well, he decided he was going to get hold of some deranged March hares and have an Easter basket tournament, an Easter basket tournament, and also a food and Easter basket drive, and we're kicking that off this Saturday with a tournament, and then we're going to, throughout the next 25, 30 days, get Easter baskets and food. Now, we're not asking the county commission to put up any money, but I am asking each one of you personally to bring an Easter basket to your next meeting for the sheriff's department.
Pat, you going to send us an email to remind us? What you want in the basket. That's amazing. Food. Okay, thank you, Dr. Hardman. Now, we got to get back over here.
Sir.
You got off step a minute.
If there's no other public comment on the HCP, if there's no comment from the commission, you all have the forms. I just ask for a motion to authorize the TAC to take that final evaluation, and I'll move forward with starting a contract with that consultant.
I got a motion.
There you go.
Mr. Chairman, let me, I don't have a problem voting to turn it to y'all, but I'm not going to be involved in the scoring process. Is all right, I'll vote on turning it over to the...
Yeah, to authorize staff to commence with the contracting.
I'll second the motion.
But ultimately, two weeks from now, I'm going to come back to you all with, hopefully, proposed, you know, there's going to be a recommendation from your TAC, but I'll already be in that contract proposal phase, letting you all know.
Okay. Motion. Any further discussion on this? Anything from the audience, public? Not? No opposition? Motion passed, 4-0.
Just again...
No. You're abstaining on my...
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, all right. Good on you. Okay.
And Commissioner Yeager's abstaining from the process of evaluation and...
Okay, from the evaluation, right here. Okay.
And so, I assume there'll be three commissioners submitting that before 5 o'clock.
Before 5:00. Okay.
Before 5:00. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Butler?
Just a clarification. We may already have it in place, but in case we don't, the board will agree that we can go out RFPs for garbage services along with the two cities. I think we may already have it. If we don't, we'd like it clarified by the board, and we're going to get it to the paper soon.
All right. Okay. Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. Got a motion over here. Commissioner Yeager?
Yeah, second.
All right. Any discussion on this motion? Any input from the audience? Commissioner O'Brien?
I just want to be certain when we go out for these bids, that we're looking at what the services that is being provided from the various service providers, so that we are comparing...
Apples and apples.
Apples, yes, sir. That would just be my only comment there.
All right. Anything from the audience on this? If there's any opposition? Not? Motion passed, 4-0. Is that it? Okay. It's been a lengthy meeting. Anyone from the audience have any business before the board? If you do, step forward and state your business. Anyone from the audience? All right, I need a motion to adjourn. Got a motion from Commissioner Smiley, second, and bye. Mr. Yeager, and that's it. Thank you for coming out.